Good evening and welcome to the 2013 Loveland City Council and mayoral candidate forum. My name is Diane Rice and I will moderate the forum this evening. This forum is presented by the League of Women Voters of Larimer County and we would like to thank the League and also the City of Loveland for supporting this candidate forum. Thank you. As a reminder, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization and as such, we do not support any candidate or party standing in any election. The League is dedicated to voter education. This forum is being broadcast live on the City of Loveland's cable channel sixteen and will be rebroadcast many times between now and Election Day on November fifth. I would like to give a short, a very brief explanation of the format for this evening. Candidates will be given ninety seconds to make opening remarks. After these remarks, questions that have been submitted by the audience and League members will be asked of the candidates. Candidates will be given one minute to respond to the questions. Questions specifically asked of one candidate will be directed to that candidate. After that person's response, other candidates will be given an opportunity to respond. At eight oh five, I will conclude the questions and answer portion of the event and candidates will be given one minute to make a closing statement. All the responses and opening and closing remarks will be carefully timed. Our timer is Carol Rush. Carol, will you raise your hand so that people know? And she will be giving candidates warning and we'll have a stop sign. When the stop sign goes up, candidates will be asked to finish their sentence quickly and so that we can move on. I will rotate through various wards in asking questions to res- in asking candidates to respond to the questions. I'm going to ask that the audience not applaud from time to time or make any audible sound in support or against any candidate. If inappropriate behavior is displayed by any member of the audience, I will ask that person to leave the room. And now I would like to introduce the candidates and then we'll go right into the meat of the forum. On my right from Ward One is Irene Fortune and next to her is Mr. Troy Kinning, Krinning, I'm sorry. From Ward Two, Carol Douding and Joan Schaefer. From Ward Three, Mr. Hugh McKean. And from Ward Three, or Four, I'm sorry, Ward Four, Dave Clark and David Hallett. The successful candidates in this city council election will serve a four-year term and are elected by registered voters from their respective wards. All candidates have agreed we will use first names throughout the forum and I will call on them by their first name. I think that is it and we will start with Ms. Fortune and her opening remark. Irene, as I said, I would call you. Thank you.
Good evening. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm running to keep the good parts of Loveland going strong. We're safe here, we've got good quality of life, and the way to preserve that is through people participating in representative government. I've seen government from the viewpoint of a chemical regulations professional and I realized, that's when I realized my dad was right. People need to be involved in their government. Now, my heavy work schedule prevented me from getting involved then, but when my husband and I moved to Loveland after long, successful careers in chemical manufacturing, I couldn't relax. I've spent years getting to know Loveland, its challenges and opportunities, and serving on boards and commissions and volunteering. I'm like my grandfather. When his rural Michigan school district ran out of money, he mortgaged his farm, the beautiful farm across the road from the farm where I grew up, to restore funding so that his and everyone else's children could go back to school. That's how strongly he cared for his neighbors. And I value my neighbors too. I value their safety and quality of life, that's why I'm running. I will represent you full-time, bringing my many skills from my corporate career to benefit the people of Loveland.
Thank you. Mr. Krinning, or Troy?
Good evening. My name is Troy Krinning. I am a native, born and raised here in Loveland. For over a decade, I have served all of you out there as a member of your planning commission. I feel that I owe all of my successes in life to the good city of Loveland and to the people who have helped shape me over the last five decades. I'm running as one way, a small way, to pay back members of the community for all that they have given to me and my family. I want to preserve all of the opportunities that I've had for my children, your children, and our next generation. I'm also running because I'm very concerned about the direction our city is headed and the belief that local government is the answer to everyone's problems. I believe, as Ronald Reagan said, "Government is not the answer to our problems, but oftentimes government is our problem." I'm very unhappy with the partisan politics that have been introduced into what is supposed to be a nonpartisan city council. I'm tired of the council voting based upon what favors a partisan political viewpoint and not what favors the best interests of the community. As a planning commissioner, I have a strong and established record of listening to all sides of an issue, asking tough questions, and then making decisions that are not based on what's best for a particular party or special interest, but rather what's best for the community in general. As we focus on rebuilding our businesses, our parks, our trails, and the homes that were destroyed by the flood, and by the way, I was here for the flood in nineteen seventy-six, I feel it's important for us to have leadership that will force government, our city government, to get out of the way of those who need to get back with their lives. Thank you.
Carol, if you'll make opening remarks. I'm finally getting it.
Thank you. I'm Carol Douding and I'm running for Ward Two City Council. I'm running because civic duty runs deep in my family. I currently serve on the Loveland Planning Commission and on the Larimer County Board of Adjustment. My friend Troy here and I have enjoyed that service and I feel that I have more to offer to the city. I'm an avid genealogist. I have twelve grandchildren. I was an engineer in the high-tech industry, testing integrated circuits, and I worked in the defense industry in supplier quality engineering. I was responsible for anything that my company bought to make sure that it was good and that it was right because we had pilots whose lives depended on our product. It's very important to know whether a rocket has been shot at you. My husband and I have been married for forty-four years. I believe the government should listen to the people. It should respond to their needs. I am a fiscal conservative, always have been, always will be. I believe that the local government, the city government, should never stand in the way of economic vitality. Thank you.
Joan, if you'd like to make your remarks.
Please, thank you. And again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I'm running as the current representative of Ward Two, so I'm running for reelection. I have been a long supporter of the League and it is important to me and important to my service in the community to represent you in a nonpartisan manner, which I believe I have done and I have a record to prove it. It's been an incredible honor to serve this community for the last four years and I can only imagine how wonderful it will be to serve in the future. I've gained a level of knowledge and expertise that I believe serves this community well, represents my constituents well, and engages with the broader region and state that we are all involved with here. Government can't listen, but I can and I do. And again, that is represented in the activities I engage with the community, the folks that I engage with, and my record. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Hugh. Thank you.
Well, thank you and thank you for hosting this forum. You know, it's, it's a pity that I don't have somebody I'm running against. This has been infuriating, Mr. Klassen, because he keeps saying I just trot that out as if, you know, just a pity party for myself, but this is where we get to discuss things. And so, thank you for holding this forum. This is a good thing to be able to do. You know, for Ward Three, I sat across that river for three days thinking about just how much of Ward Three is going to need work. And a lot of it's city work. And so, we're going to have a lot of choices in the next four years that we have to have, in my opinion, the courage to make. There are going to be a lot of things that people are going to want, there are going to be a lot of people who want us to put their city back just the way it was, and there are going to be a multitude of choices that we have to make about how that's done, the money that we have, the money we don't have, the wishes that we can fulfill and the ones we can't. I certainly have entered this, four years ago has gone by a flash, but certainly entered this as not a politician but a public servant. And for me to be able to serve my constituents is just an honor. And even though there's only one name on the ballot, I'd ask you for your vote and I'll look forward to the next four years.
Thank you. And Dave, if you'd like to make-
Thank you. My name is Dave Clark and I have been privileged to live in Loveland for fifty years as of this summer. I am proud of what this city has become over the years. We are home to a vast array of businesses, entertainment, restaurants, and other amenities. We offer a wonderful lifestyle for the young and old alike. I want this to continue. We achieved this success because of the hard work and expertise that many before us have provided. This includes business owners, city officials, and many prominent citizens. They have done this using sound, conservative fiscal policies and procedures. It is because of them that the city enjoys a very desirable financial position today. This is one of the main reasons that our city has been able to make it through the recent recession in a fairly strong position. It is also one of the main reasons that we have and will be able to recover from the flood from a few weeks ago. We need to continue to stay the course by using time-tested conservative principles to manage our budgets cautiously, prioritize our expenses thoroughly, and manage our resources responsibly. My seven years on city council, two years on the Loveland Planning Commission, the last few years as a board member of the Loveland Chamber of Commerce and the Executive Board, and many hours of service on various city boards and commissions qualified me as the right candidate to be reelected to the city council to represent Ward Four. Thank you.
And David, thank you.
Thank you too to the League of Women Voters. I'm David Hallett and I'm asking for your vote to represent Ward Four on the Loveland City Council. I grew up in Denver, attended East High School, served in the Navy for twenty-one years, and transferred to the Fleet Reserve as a senior chief petty officer. I have a degree in management and human relations with coursework toward a master's in organization development. After living in many places, owning my own business with a successful career in advertising, I chose to return to Colorado. Mostly retired, I drive the school bus because I like to stay active, I like to interact with people, and the kids are great, mostly. We chose Loveland for many of the same reasons you did, a superb quality of life, the diversity of people and ideas, and the opportunity to enjoy arts and recreation. I don't have personal business interests, they would profit by my election to the city council. My goal is to play fair and represent the people of Loveland. Business, industrial, and residential development, cultural pursuits, open lands, historical preservation, and vibrant schools all deserve our attention, as does immediate and expeditious flood recovery. I support a sustainable and diverse energy plan. I steadfastly support our right to have a timely say on our concerns for safety, health, and the protection of our property, even as the gas and oil industry, with help of some on our city council, attempts to deny us the right and move into our neighborhoods over our objections. I have learned you can't lead or represent if you don't listen and put people first. I hear people loud and clear on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Hallett. We'll go right into the question and answer portion of the forum now. And I'm going to start, since we started with Irene for the first question, we will start with Troy for, I mean, with the opening remarks, we'll start with Troy for the first question. Troy, what is your vision for Loveland going forward from today?
My vision for Loveland is to see Loveland continue down the steady path that it's been on really since its inception. I have vivid memories of Loveland from years ago as a child, I have memories of Loveland now as a small business owner. Loveland is the successful and vibrant community that it is because of all of those people on the back wall in those photographs there who have served on previous city councils. Those people who took the priorities of the community over the priorities of partisan politics. Those people who maintained a conservative value, who tried to do the best in the best interests of the community in general, and I think we owe a great deal of gratitude to every one of those folks photographed back there. My vision of Loveland is to see Loveland remain the strong, economic, vibrant, conservative, value-based community that it always has been and that I hope that it always will be. Thank you.
Hugh, Carol, if you'd like to-
Okay, thank you. I would like to see more business vitality in Loveland. I feel that we've lost jobs. I feel that we need to work hard to regain jobs and build on the base that we have. I find that occasionally, city has stood in the way and that city needs to get out of the way. We need to be flexible and we need to be responsible. I think that that can be done with just a few changes. I love the city that Loveland is. I love the arts that the city reflects and I hope that that always stays. But at the same time, the microbiologist in me screams that we need clean water. Thank you.
Go, I'm sorry, Joan, if you-
My vision for Loveland is that we continue to grow in the healthy manners that we have done, that our predecessors have brought for us, that are allowing us to expand the growth in this community and this region twofold in twenty to twenty-five years. So, it takes real vision to actually implement and manage and encourage growth that is healthy and vibrant, economically diverse. I will work to continue on the economic recovery that we have been going through since two thousand and eight. And we are lucky, and I agree, we had great leadership in this community that has made this community what it is today, and I consider myself part of leadership going forward. Our recovery, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Hugh, if you'd like to-
Certainly. I, I think you'd be foolish if you didn't answer, keep doing what we've been doing. We all live here for, for very, very specific reasons and, and a lot of those have to do with the things that we like to do every day, but most of them have to do with the fact that we live in a community that most of us chose. And, and even if we grew up here, we chose to stay. What we do to keep this community vibrant and vital is we keep being the community we are. I get in arguments frequently about whether or not we're a city or a town. The fact that it takes me a long time to go buy bread and milk is one of the things that reminds me continually that this is a remarkable town in which we live. It's keeping the conversations with our neighbors, making sure that we're looking out for all of us, not just ourselves, and, and looking out for what we want out of the community, which is just what we found when we got here. So, I would say keeping it the same.
Okay. Dave?
Thank you. Well, obviously, one of the first priorities going forward is flood recovery, both in terms of our city and in terms of the businesses that have been affected by that flood. The city is able, going to be able to recover quite well, I think, because of the fiscal responsibility it's been in and the great financial situation it is, finds itself. We need to continue with the priority-based budgeting because as, after a few weeks ago, our priorities have changed budget-wise. We need to refocus and make sure we have public safety and health, utilities, roads and highways, things that the city is responsible for as one of our top priorities. Businesses, however, have been affected, not only those down in the floodplain, but others that have suffered because of down, loss of their own customers. We need to help, we need to support, we need to sometimes get out of the way, let them do what they do best. Our businesses are our backbone of our community. Without the businesses in this town, we would not be the town we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. And David, if you-
Thank you. My vision for Loveland is really pretty simple. I think we need to build, and we need to turn on the microphone. There we are.
There you go.
Thank you. I think we need to build on what we have now. I don't think we need to go forward by looking in the rearview mirror. We need to look forward and see what's out there and the different challenges that are upon us now in this day and age. We have neighbors growing to the north, the south, and the east. We have neighbors to the west that are in dire straits because of the flood. We need to come together as a community to help these people and to bring ourselves into a major community that's not just a bedroom community for the rest of the front range. We need to have the right mix of industrial, light, light industrial, business, and residential development in the neighborhoods to continue that growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. The next question-
Irene.
Oh, I'm sorry, Irene, thank you very much. I told you, you're going to have to keep me honest here. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Diane.
Yes. I deserve that.
The motto for my campaign is, "I'm the candidate who cares about your safety and quality of life with the time and knowledge to do something about it." And I've developed that over the years as I've gotten to know more people in town, particularly driving for Saint. I love the people who, who ride in my car with me. Some of them have been here for years, others are here because their children are here. We need to keep the city nice for the people who have been here a long time, who are moving in, and it's a, and also, I see a place where my neighbors' children can grow up and work without having to move far away. I see keeping, maintaining good infrastructure, planning ahead so the water, power, roads, electric, drainage, stay in good working order, and also our essential services to keep us all safe.
Thank you. All right. The next question, we will start with Carol, asking Carol to, to respond first. Will you have a problem voting on an issue in a way that is contrary to your own personal beliefs if it is what your constituents or Loveland citizens want?
There is within me a moral compass that I will never deviate from, but I am able to listen and to respond to people. I will respond to the majority. There may be an excessively passionate thing that you have in your life, but if you are just a few, it cannot override the majority. Thank you.
Joan?
Well, sometimes votes like that keep me awake at night. I've made those votes. I'm quoted as having made those votes. I know how tough it is, but it is an opportunity to represent my constituents and that's what I do. And I've been very dedicated to that over the last four years and I look forward to doing so in the future. I do have a moral compass, but I also know that I'm here to represent people. And sometimes I'm representing the majority of people and sometimes I'm representing the minority. All of us have a right to a voice and sometimes I'm carrying that message. Thank you.
Thank you. And Hugh?
I use the term "carrying water" a lot and I do it for my, my commissions that I sit on. We are asked to make decisions sometimes that we don't think are absolutely the best, but we also know the reasons why we've been asked to make them. A perfect example was the purchase of some open space down south of us that was just horrendously priced. And, and I was, I was opposed to the price we were going to have to pay, but my commission asked me to do it and I carried their water. I think it's important when we, when we look at, at what we're doing, that we never lose the sight of how we do it. As I said, this is public service. And public service to me means that you weigh it, you stay up late at night, sometimes you, you make a vote and, and you think, "I did it the best way I possibly could."
Thank you. And Dave?
The simple answer is no, I will not have a problem making decisions that my constituents feel if I have a different belief, and I've done that several times as has been discussed by other counselors here. That comes with the territory. What I have found, though, my personal core beliefs, moral compass, like others have said, is pretty well in line with almost everybody in Loveland. I don't have a problem with that because those, those kind of beliefs agree. It's the issues that the city deals with, pay this, pay that, do this project, do that project, that's where the differences of opinions come in. I talk to many people in my ward, as well as other citizens in Loveland, as well as many businesses, asking them about certain issues that are coming up. And yes, I get a gauge for what they feel and then I make decisions based on what I feel is best as well as what they have told me. And I have made decisions that I would not have done had I been doing it myself personally. Thank you.
I think all of us in every walk of life have to make decisions that involve turning on a microphone. I think all of us in every walk of life have to make decisions from time to time that are difficult, they may not go with your family or your friends, but it's the right thing to do. I would bring to this job an ability to listen and to find the middle ground. You're not going to please all of the people all of the time, that's for sure, but I will not, and I will resist being led down the path of a select few, no matter what they are, to determine the future of this beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene?
I think the position on council isn't about me and my personal concerns. It's about representing the people in my ward and in my city. And I've found many times that if I have taken the time to sit down and, and talk through the, the people's concerns and the reasons for the concerns and the basis for those reasons, it's surprising, but many times, we as a group can come to a better decision in the end. And that's what I would look for. I, I have lots of time to listen to people. I've done that all through my career. I look forward to good, solid solutions for our city.
And Troy, if you-
Decisions that I make and votes that I cast will follow the track record that I think I've established over the last decade on the Loveland Planning Commission. I will come to every meeting prepared. I will come to every- I will come to every meeting with an open mind. I will listen to all points of view that are presented, and then I will make a decision that's not based on what's in the best interest of Troy, not, not what is in the best interest necessarily of the council, not necessarily what is in the best interest of the 20 or 30 people who have packed the room, but rather I'll make a decision based on what's best for the 70,000 Loveland residents in general. I think I've established that as my track record on the Planning Commission, and I will continue to do that as a councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. One quick thing. When I made these slides, these PowerPoint slides, I had Ward Three and Four, the candidates, I had them wrong. So just for everyone's, so everyone knows, that's my error. Mr. Clark and Mr. Hallett are from Ward Four, and Mr. McKean is from Ward Three.
And I'm not willing to move.
Oh, okay. Especially not for me. The next question is, Joan will start, and the question is, "Do you approve of the council decision not to put the fracking moratorium petition on the ballot? Please explain your reasons."
Happy to. And actually, my revoke, my vote reflects that. I voted to put it on the ballot, and my reason for that was because I believe that the petitioners and the signatories on the petitions were valid. They were validated twice by our city clerk. I believe that the process should be, and is normally in these situations where you have an appellant in the process, is that it's put on the ballot, and I think that is why there is no case law that differs, that it's put on the ballot, that the votes are not counted until the appeals process is completed. And that way, both the petitioner and the appellant are being treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Hugh?
And this was the, the nature of our disagreement, so, and that's fine. I, I support the decision to wait and find out what happens in the appeals court. I think this is, this is one of the things that, that doesn't really keep me up at night because when I sit down and I think about what I believe, which is that no matter who you are, whether you sit next to me on this dais, or whether or not you're my neighbor down the street, you have the same standing in my eye, whether you are 3,000 people who signed a petition, or whether you're one person who says, "I have the right to protest it." You have the same standing, and it's one of the things that is truly remarkable about this country, is that we have processes in place and we follow them through. What we all know is that whatever happens in this process is if the appeal comes back to us, it will go on a ballot, and we will all have a chance to say. Thanks.
Thank you. And Dave?
So here's what happened. In, in short, a group of people decided to put a moratorium issue on the ballot, which they had the right to do. That petition was challenged legally by a citizen in Loveland, which he has a right to do. That situation is currently being discussed, and motions and petitions and appeals are being done through the courts. Yes, I support the decision that the council made to not put it, to not do anything to let the process go through because of the information provided by our own city attorney here in this room. The information that was presented, in my opinion, dictated and, and made me believe that it was best to let that process go through and carry forth. This was not about not giving the rights to 3,000 people that signed the petition. The truth is, I've heard from many, many citizens in other areas of the city who support the decision to not have it on the moratorium, or not have it on the ballot. So I do support what was done there. Thank you, and it will be on the ballot soon, I imagine.
I absolutely disagreed with Mr. Crenning, Mr. McKean, and Dave Clark. A ballot, a voting decision delayed is a decision denied. It reminds me too much of, "We'll vote sometime down the road on this thing." And it sets an ugly precedent for this city council. Somewhere down the road, some other citizen's initiative will come up, and this city council, they don't like it, the majority doesn't like what is being proposed, somehow they conjure up a lawsuit and they just sit back and let it go. We don't have any idea at all how long this will take before it is adjudicated. The legal system can be moved very slowly when people want it to move slowly. So this is an opportunity to just deny us the vote. After 21 years in the Navy, I get really incensed about that. Thank you.
Irene, would you like to respond to this question?
If I were on council on September 3rd, I would have voted to put Protect Our Loveland's Ballot Initiative on the ballot. It was one of four options the city lawyer gave to council, and it puzzles me why a majority of councilors didn't choose this option because it met all three goals from that and prior meetings. When council first considered a moratorium, councilors said, "We don't want a lawsuit." And they were assured no cities have been sued over moratoriums. When the moratorium ended, councilors told citizens, "If you want to postpone drilling longer, then use the petition process toward a ballot initiative as granted in the city charter." Counsel, third, council wanted to uphold one citizen's right to protest. They accomplished only the last. Now there's a lawsuit, and drilling may commence at any time, and the council does not know how the citizens feel. I would have taken the city lawyer's option that would have accomplished all three. I want to hear the people's voice. Thank you.
Troy?
Thank you. The question really isn't about fracking, but I'm suspecting that we will get into that tonight, and I hope that we do. And Mr. Hallett, even though you hadn't heard my answer, I appreciate you speaking about how I feel. And given that you were one of the Protect Our Loveland petition walkers, I respect your position on how you feel. I absolutely support what the city council did at its last meeting. I don't know if people in the audience have heard of Dred Scott, Rosa Parks, the minority. I think it's just as important for elected officials to stand up for the rights of the minority on occasion as it is for the rights of the majority. And by the way, the majority was 20 or 30 very vocal people that filled this council chambers. This issue will be ripe in time to come to a vote of the people. I hope, I can't wait until that time comes, and I can't wait until members of the community can have a very informed, intelligent, robust debate about this entire issue of fracking. I don't fear the question of fracking coming up, but I believe what the council did was not only right, but it was lawful, and I applaud those who stood up and did the right thing.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. I am so glad this question came up because I sat in the Planning Commission chambers with Mr. Crenning, Troy, over a year ago, as these regulations that our city now has in place were discussed, and that the Brothers Frederacy came and were passionate in their appeals to us, and we told them as a commission to go and get organized, and they did, and it turned into Protect Our Loveland. But also the thing that came out of it is that we have the best and the strictest regulations in the state of Colorado. We would not have had those had those regulations not gone ahead. It would have been a free-for-all, and I applaud the city council for passing the regulations that we had. They're the best that we have, and I, I applaud the city council on the 3rd of September for allowing a measure of discussion to happen on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll move to the next question. I am going to let the city council candidates answer questions for about, I, I think the break we actually took was about 20 minutes, but I'm gonna, we're gonna stretch this 10 minutes, and then that'll stretch the mayoral portion out to about 10 after 9:00, rather than 9:00 o'clock. So that's kind of a halfway mark, hopefully. And we'll let Hugh start to end with this question. What will you do to ensure that the petitions asking for a two-year moratorium on fracking will be put to a vote?
I'll just do my job.
I will let the legal process take its course. Whatever happens through there, we'll come back, and if the, if the petition is found valid, then the city council by law, as I understand from our city attorney, is required to put that issue on the ballot, and that will be done. If it comes back otherwise, then we'll find out what the options are at that time.
David?
If I'm elected as city council...
Your mic, please. Thank you.
If I'm elected to this city council, I will do everything within my power to get this onto the ballot as soon as possible. I firmly believe that many cases in, in this country and in the state, you have a ballot initiative going in one direction, and you have a legal challenge going in the parallel direction. If at some point the courts say this petition or this ballot immeasur is unconstitutional, then everything is moot and goes away and we're done. But waiting for the, for the legal aspect to go is simply delaying the vote, disenfranchising and denying the vote to the voters of this community. It in fact is what is doing it, delaying it to the point where fracking or drilling's gonna happen and there's anything we can do about it.
Thank you. Irene?
Regarding getting the ballot measure onto the ballot at some point where, so that citizens can vote on it, I'm finding that's to be a, quite a heartfelt issue as I walk around Ward One and knock on doors and talk to people. People, we've got, we've got all sorts of views about oil and gas activity inside city limits within our ward. People who work in the industry and see no problem with it, people who are concerned, I've heard the word scared. We've got other people who are just questioned, "Why within city limits?" But they all want to vote, and so I feel it's important to uphold their desire to vote, and I will work hard to get that ballot measure on the ballot.
Thank you, Troy.
I fully believe in the legal process. It's slow, it's ugly, it's cumbersome, but it works. It will take some time, we'll get a decision. The question presupposes that the decision will be that the, that the petition is valid. I won't try to second-guess what a judge will, what determination he'll make. If indeed it's upheld, it will be put to a special election. That's the law. If it's deemed that the petition is invalid, then it's a, it's a moot issue. Now, what you should know is that the city council wanted to avoid a lawsuit. Protect Our Loveland has now filed another lawsuit against our city council members and the city of Loveland. So they were rather intuitive with regarding this whole issue being a tinderbox of nothing but litigation. So I think that the courts will do their, do what they do best, they will do it without a political influence, and if and when a decision comes down that the petition should move forward, a special election will be heard. Again, this isn't a fracking question, but I hope we get to one pretty soon. Thank you.
Carol?
Thank you. I was never under the impression that speed was an issue on this petition. The issue of the petition was whether there should be a moratorium, and that is the thing that people will be allowed to vote on, whether it's the existing language that there is, or whether it's different and actually more specific language, rather than the very general language that's in the petition right now. But I believe that no matter what the outcome in the courts is, that this will come to a vote of the people of Loveland.
Joan?
I believe that the decision on 9/3 that the council made mixed the executive branch and the judicial branch, and that's why I voted the way I did, which is put it on the ballot, let the process go forward, both processes, including the lawsuit by the appellant, because the first lawsuit was by the appellant. Each of us on the council are named individually, and of course will be represented by our very astute and talented city attorney, and I'm very comfortable with that. I am concerned, however, when the issue came to us and the regulations that came to us for consideration, as great as they are, ahead of the game as they are for much of the state, our Planning Commission actually did not make a recommendation to the council. So again, I'll let the legal process go forward, abide by the council decision, and we'll see where we land. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question, we will start with Dave, and the question is, Loveland has a food tax, food sales tax. What is your view on the food tax? And if it were rescinded, what money would replace these receipts? How does the attack, how does the tax affect various income groups?
Thank you for that question. As a matter of fact, just last week at the city council meeting, I raised that very question. As we look at our budgets, which just came through for approval, there was very little change to that budget even after the disaster flood that we've had. My comment, and from what I see is, and according to what the budgets say, is we have a surplus of funds. So I raised the question, if we have this surplus of funds, why don't we consider looking at either reducing or eliminating the food tax that we've had here for the last several years? That would benefit all the citizens of Loveland, particularly those who are struggling the most. So I am in favor of bringing that issue up and looking at it. As far as replacing funds, we simply prioritize our budget and make sure we have the important things taken care of. Other things will have to take the backseat.
I agree that the food tax ought to be reviewed. My basic view on that is a food tax is a very regressive tax. It affects those who are least able to pay it most. I remember from my time living in Kansas, you got a, they had a, a food tax statewide, but it was income-based, and if you had a certain level of income and you'd been paying the food tax, you got a rebate on your income tax. I'm not sure how that would work here, but I certainly feel that that should be looked at, as all of our sources of funding should be. Thank you.
Irene?
The food tax does impact people on a limited income heavily, and it does make sense in this day and age to cut that tax back. It probably started in Loveland when we had, when our only shopping options were grocery stores, but now we have retail of all sorts, really a, a strong tax base without taxing groceries. And so now, and when I look at the budget, I see that taxes of all kinds, property tax, our mill levy, the sales tax, including the food tax, comprise only 14% of the total revenue that comprise the budget. And so food tax must be a small portion of this. I think I would have high value for finding a replacement for that or putting off a project or two a little longer.
Troy?
I would wholeheartedly support the repeal of the food tax, but I wouldn't stop there. I would take a look at all of the taxes, all of the fees that all of us in the city of Loveland pay. Do you know that if you want to build a house, the first 20-plus thousand dollars of that go to the city in the form of fees? Some of you might recall my recent fight with the city over a $20 fee that our municipal court was imposing that I thought was wrong, and I called it out. Talking about the budget, in 2012, our actual budget was 171 million. In 2014, the proposed budget is 222, 222 million. That's a 30% increase. The question really shouldn't be, "If we cut the food tax, what will we do to replace that revenue?" The question should be, "When we cut the food tax, what can we do to offset the excessive spending that continues to go on in Loveland?" And that would be my approach.
The food tax should be repealed. Period.
Thank you. Joan?
It's fun to get this question. I brought this up my first year on, on council at our council retreat, along with former council member Kent Sol. It's come up in every council, annual council retreat, now we call them advances, every year. It's gotten no traction. I brought this up again recently from the dais, when five members of our council chose to return an excess of general fund money beyond our, our required reserves, a small portion of it, $750,000 a year, that they... of it, $750,000 a year, that they can't promise every year, but this year, 2014, will go back to rate payers, utility rate payers, water rate payers, to offset an increase in rates that were all occurring, incurring. But the reality is, the money in the general fund that's going back didn't come from rate payers, that's an enterprise fund. That's a business activity of the city. It came from the taxpayers and it came from retail tax. I wholeheartedly support looking at this issue and understanding what we live on, on the backs of people's grocery bills.
Thank you.
I think we have to look at this, and I think what we're setting ourselves up to do in this next year, it, government runs slowly, and so we tend to want things quickly that we often get over time. We're going to take a look at our budget in the next year. It'll probably take more than a year to go deep down into it and take a look at it. I think that this food tax could be easily repealed. I think it would be in agreement with Dave Hallett. I think it is a little regressive. And I think it's one of those things that when we can do something for our community, we do. When we can keep our water rates from going up over 100%, we do it, and we find the money to do that. And I don't think that it's a problem to find a few million dollars in our budget to make sure that we don't have to tax groceries. And Irene, I came to this town kind of late, but we've always had plenty of shopping other than just groceries. So Fourth Street is going through a revival, and it used to be a JCPenney's down there, and it used to be lots of other shops down here. So I don't think we're going to have a problem looking at repealing that. I think, like everything else, it takes some hard decisions, takes looking at what we need to do and what we want to do.
Thank you. Thank you. The next, let's see, Dave, you need to respond. Did you, you're the first one, I'm sorry. All right, we will start with David for this question. Are there any changes in policy that you will champion as a result of what you have learned from the flood? What are your priorities for flood recovery?
That's a question I've given a lot of thought to on a number of levels. I've enjoyed driving up Highway 34 to Estes Park, and I don't think I'll get to do that for a while. And I've enjoyed going down into the areas down off First Street where the flood has hit most hard. We've experienced a second, a 100-year flood twice in the last 40 years. Nature is very capricious. We can't tame nature. We're going to have floods, things are going to happen. And human beings are a funny lot. They're going to move where they want, they don't think bad things are going to happen to them, but when they do, they do. I think we need to accept the fact that people are going to build in the middle of floodplains, just like they build in the middle of forests, and we need to do our best to help them protect their properties. But at the same time, we need, I think we have to have a higher level of requirements that they do the right thing to take care of themselves, instead of depending on the rest of us to come to the rescue. But we must accept that these things happen and decide if it's worth the cost to continue rebuilding every time. Thank you.
Irene.
Loveland was lucky in the flood. Within Loveland's city limits, there were no fatalities, and now no buildings are condemned. Everyone will be able to return to their building. And that is due to good planning on the part of the city staff to keep people from building in the flood zone in the first place. It wasn't that long ago that the '76 flood came through, and then there's been floods before that. So I think if there's one thing we can learn from this flood, is to plan for a disaster recovery center, like the one that works so well here. And also, one place for people who are displaced, likely outside of our city limits, to come for information, guidance, or maybe just someone to talk to if they're feeling stressed because they're not sure if they live up in the canyon, can they ever get back to their house? That's got to wear on people, so.
Thank you. Troy.
I would resist the city council taking a micromanagement approach to changing any policy. The people that we would rely on for input are our first responders, our fire chief, our police chief, our city staff, our paramedics. I would want to hear from them what worked and what didn't work, and if we can identify those things that didn't work, that the city could devote resources to, to make sure that it does work in the future, then I would support that. But this is a case of, this is a prime example of people getting elected to city council and then wanting to sit up here and try to micromanage the departments. We have a weak mayor, council, strong city manager, form of government, and I believe that that's what we should rely upon, are the professionals that we pay to go out there and do the job that we're paying them to do. If they want to make a policy change, I know that we'll hear from them, and I would support the policy changes that staff recommends. I would resist policy changes coming from the council or from this dais. Thank you.
Carol.
All right, thank you. I have the experience of sitting on the Larimer County Board of Adjustment, and the Larimer County Board of Adjustment deals with zoning changes and such land use issues all over the county. And I have sat many times and looked at the maps and the plat drawings of the Big Thompson Canyon, up the Pooter Canyon. I can tell you that there were some terrible things done in those canyons, just because I know all the vaulted septic systems that are up those canyons. But Mother Nature had her way with us yet again, and we can't tame her. But we can and probably will be redrawing the maps of our floodplains. We will be making decisions, and I mean the big W-E, about where the river belongs, where the river wants to be. I think, oh, thank you. I'm done.
Joan.
First, I want to take this opportunity to thank our first responders, our city staff, and the generosity of our community, because our ability to lead in this region rests on those members of our community, that were the most engaged and the most critical in providing service to those in need. And I am very, very proud of this community because of that. I think our policies are largely, at least, pretty solid. I think we're going to need to help businesspeople who have gaps in their financing, and homeowners that have those gaps. That's why we have an excess reserve, we have a rainy day fund. So we have the opportunity to make sure that people are made as whole as possible. But most importantly, going forward, we are leaders in this region on major issues with five riverbeds washed out. Many, many communities in need, and more in need than ours. I do have the leadership experience and the relationships to work on issues like road rebuilding. Thank you.
Well, I would certainly echo the words about how proud our community makes us. We volunteered hours and days down at the recovery center, and just to watch the outpouring of donations and just help. You would not believe the number of people who just showed up and said, "I want to help, I want to pitch in somehow." When you're asking for policies, we've already been doing what we need to do, and I would take exception to Mr. Hallett. We already tell people, "Don't build in our floodplain." And guess what? That's one of the reasons why we had very little damage to private property in the floodplain, tremendous amount of damage to city property. You know, I think that we weren't lucky. I think that we were ravaged. And I think that very frequently, water shows you where it likes to go and not always where you want it to be. So we're going to have to look at that as we go back, and probably one of those priorities is simply to create that contingency, to understand what we have on our hands, what we might get in another 36 years, or maybe 500. We simply don't know.
Dave.
Thank you. You know, to reiterate what Hugh just said, the city manager told us publicly that one of the reasons we did not sustain as much damage as we could have is because we, our current restrictions, our current regulations do restrict building in the floodplain. And like Hugh just mentioned, the city property is the one that suffered probably the most as far as individual owners with parks and other facilities that were down in that area. Going forward, we need to look as a city, and not the council by any means, but those with the expertise to look at the infrastructure rebuild. Do we need to redesign? Do we need to look at which way the river is going to go and look at some different options? Of course, we need to do that. But also, we need to help businesses that need to be rebuilt there. Providing funds is one thing, but reducing regulations is another. We also need to recognize that several businesses along the river need to put the river back so they can continue their operation. We need, the city needs to work with the Corps of Engineer and other government agencies to relax those restrictions and regulations as well, so businesses can get back to doing what they do best.
Thank you. I'm going to move to closing remarks now for the candidates. Since we are kind of tight on time, I have, there's one question that I'd like for all of you to maybe try to address in your closing remarks, and that is, what are the most critical issues facing the city? And so if you'll address that along with your closing remarks, we'll give you 90 seconds rather than one minute. That's stretching your closing remarks to 90 seconds, so, to account for this. Okay? Splitting the difference again.
First, thanks to the League of Women Voters for reminding me to turn this thing on, and for organizing this forum. I appreciate the opportunity to participate. I'm David Hallett, and I ask for your vote to represent Ward Four on the Loveland City Council. I am asking for your vote because I know I will be the most effective representative for Ward Four. Here's why. I bring with me the experience of 21 years in the Navy. As a senior enlisted person, I know how to lead and I know how to listen, listening, which is the most important part of leadership. I bring with me experience of running a successful business. I know how to budget, how to plan, and how to manage. I bring with me my love for this community and place, for all that it offers to us as residents, and I want to keep that quality of life for all of us as we grow. I know how to lead and how to listen, how to budget, how to manage. And I will bring these skills, a willingness to spend whatever time it takes to research and gather information so that I understand all of the potential benefits and challenges of any program or project we'll bring to the city. The most important things that I need to think, I think that we need to tackle in this city, the immediate thing is the flood recovery, but we also have to be looking forward in a progressive way to keeping this city going and on the right track. I think looking in the rearview mirror and trying to put taxes back where they were 40 years ago doesn't get us where we need to be. I'm David Hallett, and I'm asking for your vote to represent Ward Four on the Loveland City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave? Yes, yes. It's your closing remarks, but we would also like for you to talk about what you feel are the most critical issues facing the city.
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for providing this forum so that we could reach out to you as well as to the TV audience. Most critical issues, as has been said, we've got to recover from the flood. And I think several people have outlined ways of doing that. We need to focus on that and make sure our businesses are back to where they need to be, as well as some of the city facilities. We need to prioritize what we're doing in the city government. We need to understand and go back to what the real role of government is. As has been mentioned earlier, we don't need the government telling us every step of the way what to do. We're not there. We don't do that in this city, at least not yet. I don't want to, I want to make sure we don't get to that point. We already have excessive regulations, excessive fees, and other areas that severely impact our businesses, our citizens, and others. We need to look at those. We need to remember, and I've said this I don't know how many times, small business is the backbone of our community. It always has been, and I believe it always will be. We need to do what we can to support that, and sometimes it's getting out of the way. We need to look at our development review regulations, which are being looked at now again, try and find out what needs to be done to ease that back so our businesses can get back to doing what they do best. The city is a great place to be. I want to continue to drive for it so that it is a place for people to want to come and bring their families and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm going to do a 90-second commercial for the businesses down on South Lincoln. So, because we have to, we have to help these people out. They are recovering from a flood that took virtually everything away. The Mexican Inn, they got their carpet back in, they'll be open soon for business, please go down and have a meal. Sonic is open, go drive through, enjoy some roller skating kids delivering your food. Rocky Mountain Quick Lube, they actually, this is remarkable to me, had two and a half inches of water in their basement, and that basement was almost down to the river level. That said, go get your oil changed. Stan's Auto, they're open. You got a problem with your car? Go down, get them to fix it. Stan Bartholomew is just one of my favorite people in the world, wonderful man. Bounce is going to be open soon, they'll have their electricity back. Metric Motors, they're down there, go have your foreign car, let's just say, or any car worked on down there. Sandy's Upholstery, back in business, ready to do business with you. You know, this is what we need to do. What are our priorities? We need to get people back down there doing what we do. We shop, we get things fixed, we take care of each other. So that's what I got to say. I appreciate your vote, even if I'm the only guy on the list. I'm the only guy on the list.
Thank you. Joan.
Well, I agree with others thus far, the flood recovery obviously is a significant critical issue for us, and particularly, you know, what are going to be the decisions we make about rebuilding our community and those public assets that have really been adversely affected. I also know that it's imperative that we come out of this flood recovery doing exactly what we were doing before, which is growing the economy of this community and assisting our citizens and businesses to prosper. That's something that I've cared a great deal about, certainly with downtown, certainly with core redevelopment of our community. That includes Metric Motors and Quick Lube, I use both those services. So, and by core, I mean the US 34 and 287 corridors. We're now, we don't know what that mix of cars coming through and tourists coming through to our community is going to look like, what kind of road we're going to have up there to encourage that. And of course, it's important to Estes Park to not lose that gateway. So we're going to have to work regionally. We're not going to be able to just work in a provincial, little town way. And we don't, and we haven't. And we've got a great reputation in the larger region and the state, as a city that takes care of business, and takes care of people, and creates a quality of life that is bar none, better than anywhere in this state, as far as I'm concerned. And I'll continue to work on that, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Carol.
Right, thank you. I wanted to express my thanks to the League of Women Voters. This has been a wonderful evening, excitement and all. I want to thank you all for coming here tonight and taking your time, and those of you who are watching.
And calling in.
And calling in. And that reminds me of a phone I used to have a long time ago. I want you to know that I listen. Forty-four years of marriage have taught me a couple of things. One of them is listening, and the other is the ability to compromise and to make things work. And I can do that. I can solve problems. I made a career of solving problems. I can solve problems that this city faces. We need to support our businesses, no matter where they are in the city. And I'm so glad Metric Motors is open because I am overdue for an oil change. We need to find ways for jobs to come back to the city. We need to create that environment that's, it's already a beautiful place to live, but how about a beautiful place to work and a beautiful place to own a business? We need to do an in-depth review in the city. This is on the shoulders of the city council, in-depth review of our regulations and our fees and the burdens that we put on our businesses. Are they reasonable? Are they right? And we need to make sure that our basic services, like police, fire, and water, are well-covered. Thank you.
Troy.
Thank you. I will just simply agree with all the comments that I've heard previously about our need to help those who have been devastated by the flood. I think we all get that, and I think everyone in this room and everybody in TV land gets it, and we'll do everything we possibly can to support those people that were tragically affected. What direction do the voters want to go? That's a question that we should ask as we walk into this next election. Will we become another Boulder in Fort Collins, or will we... Will we become another Boulder in Fort Collins, or will we preserve those conservative values that Loveland really has been the, the bedrock of for, for many, many, many generations? There are a lot of people who would like to make this election about fracking, but it's not about fracking. It's about a lot, it's about expanded government in our daily lives. It's about spending untold millions of dollars. We didn't get to talk about it tonight, but it's about spending $16 million on a new museum. It's about increased regulation and taxes that make it more difficult for those who have a business here or those who desire to open a business here. While I embrace Loveland's growth and all of the wonderful people who have discovered my hometown and now call it their hometown, I'm not a newcomer to Loveland, and I'm not running for election simply so that I can get on council and start making vast changes to the way we have always done business. As a member of the city council, I promise you this, I will always be prepared, I will always come to the meeting with an open mind, I will always listen to all sides of every single issue, and I will always vote based upon what's in the best interest of all of us, not the few of us. I would respect your vote, I would honor your vote, and thank you for your participation tonight and for your courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you. And Irene?
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters and to all of you for taking your personal time to educate yourselves. You are the foundation of our democracy. As Thomas Jefferson said, "An educated citizenry is a vital requisite for our survival as a free people." I look forward to representing you and all our neighbors on council. As we work through the critical issues of flood recovery, continuing the economic development plan that the city has underway to get jobs in here that pay a living wage, and the way to do that, in my opinion, is to take good care of our critical infrastructure, roads, water, power, drainage, and our essential services, fire and water. I'm a, I came from a farm, from manufacturing, I'm a pretty basic kind of person. But just as the flood took us by surprise, other things may. And so regardless which questions come up, I've already invested in our community through skills learned as a professional scientist and manager. Leadership, thoughtful, thorough research into whatever question arises, teamwork, rational decision-making, long-term planning. All capabilities I developed sometimes as the only technical professional woman as far as the eye could see on those chemical plants. I'm Irene Fortune, running for city council in Ward One, and I would be honored to receive your vote and to represent you.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the candidates. The League of Women Voters really appreciates your participation. This is the way our voters learn about you. So, thank you very much. First, I would like to introduce the candidates for the ma, for mayor of Loveland. The successful candidate will serve a two-year term and is elected at large by registered voters within the city limits. The candidates are Mr. Alexi Graywall, Mr. Cecil Gutierrez, and Mr. Darrel Clausen. And these candidates have also agreed to use first names throughout the question and answers portion. So, we'll begin right away, and I will ask Alexi to make his opening remarks.
Since this process starts...
Turn your microphone on, I'm sorry.
Push it?
Yeah, push hard. There you go, you got it.
Excuse me?
90 seconds for opening remarks. Thank you.
Since I pulled my petition, not a one, not one single person has discouraged me from not, from running. Not Walt Skalron, not Hugh McKean, who in fact was very encouraging, not Bill Cahill, not Brian who owns Henry's, not Billy Colson, not Joan Schaefer, not Terry Andrews, not my best friend, not Ed Popkis, my homeless friend whose opinion I value highly, none of the contractors that I work with, none of the tradesmen that I work with, not a person that I met on the street has discouraged me from running, not the gal that runs in the key thrift store where I bought this jacket for, for $4. No one has discouraged me from running. Not one single person. I'm running for mayor because it's something I want to do with my life. I think I have a valuable perspective. I'm a working man in this city. I'm not retired. I have to live here and survive and get along day to day, just like most of the rest of the people that live here. Not all of you, but most of you. So, I'm here to ask for your vote. It's a serious endeavor, and I want to have some fun with it, but, and I appreciate your time, and I appreciate a country that allows me to garner 25 signatures and run for mayor. There's no other place in the world like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecil?
Well, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to all of you for participating. As your mayor, the past four years, I have dedicated myself to building relationships and securing opportunities beneficial to our entire community. Together, we have achieved many goals and created unprecedented momentum in Loveland. We are in a position to take advantage of the recovery from the recession. Infrastructure improvement has been a priority, and we have dealt with those tough decisions. Improving infrastructure will be an ongoing process. We have improved the development review process. We've developed strategic plans for economic development citywide and downtown revitalization. Having taken these important steps, taking advantage of development opportunities will be easier. We have also bonded as neighbors to overcome the recent devastating flooding. Prioritizing our tax dollars will be critical. The recovery will take years, not days or months. But one thing I know for sure, tough times don't last, tough people do. I taught my military units and local band students that hard work is the key to success. During the last four years, I have demonstrated that I am not afraid of hard work. I commit to you that same continued level of effort during the next two years. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. And Darrell, thank you.
Everywhere you go, I'm asked, "Why are you running?" Because the Loveland City Council is drifting, in my judgment, away from the performances of those great city councilors of the past. You see them all across the back wall. What were those characteristics? Pay-as-you-go, accumulate for infrastructure, prioritize the essentials. In 2008, when the Great Recession hit, we faced a $3.5 million shortfall in our budgeting. How to solve this? We brought in over 100 citizens into the, into these chambers to advise us how to solve the problem. Those citizen volunteers told us loud and clear, prioritize, prioritize, put first things first. What are those first things? They are police, they're fire, they're water, power, and traffic infrastructure. Put the non-essentials, your wish lists, into second place. I believe my credentials are exceptional. I owned and operated my commercial radio stations in Loveland for over 14 years, never missed a payroll of 15 individuals. I flew Uncle Sam's combat aircraft for 10 years. In the public sector, I was the Lerman County Commissioner for eight years. I've been on the Loveland City Council for seven years and have formulated $2 billion worth of budgets and never missed one.
Thank you.
Put first things first.
Okay. We'll start now with questions, and we'll start, the first question will go to Cecil, and then Darrell, and then back to Alexi. What is your approach to monetary incentives for businesses?
Monetary incentives for businesses are just like what I would do in my own personal investment portfolio. First, you have to know what you're investing in, and you have to know whether or not that investment is going to be successful. What's the return on your investment? And if, and the biggest and most critical issue you have to deal with is, will you get a return on that investment? Because if, if the investment you're being asked to make doesn't make good business sense, don't invest. If someone can show you that what you're going to do is get a return of your dollar, invest. And that's what I do with my own money. I would do no different. I would never risk the taxpayers' dollar on ventures that are up here.
Darrell?
Thank you. My approach to monetary investments, very, excuse me, very careful examinations. The first thing I'm going to look at when we have an applicant for incentives, and believe me, they come through that door in numbers, it's almost like take a number. First thing I'm going to look for is the candidate's track record. We have a lot of individuals come to us. Everybody wants an incentive these days, and the first thing is this particular business applicant must have some sort of track record, a track record, that is. And then that candidate will go through a very excruciating and lengthy application process that this city has in place. It is to determine that when we incentivize this individual or this company, what sort of return are we going to have on this particular investment? The most important thing that we need to have happen in this community, as we have found out back in '08, and the country went into recession.
Thank you.
Jobs, jobs, jobs.
And Alexi?
Well, you know, there's, there's a return on an investment in a couple different ways. It's not always just how much money comes straight back into your pocket. I think when business people have made a commitment to the city, and some of you sitting here have, and then you come forward with the plan and you vested yourself, then I think that, you know, if the return isn't immediate, it's all right. In terms of our situation right now, a return on an investment can be moral, if, you know, it's a moral situation. If there are people right now that need finances because of the flood, we may never see that money back, but we have an obligation to help them. So, there's a return on investment that's financial, and that has to be vetted and carefully done. And then there's a return on investment, which is our obligation to our citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Darrell. What is your vision for downtown Loveland? What actions would you take to make this vision a reality?
Well, I'd follow somewhat the vision that has been taking place, every issue that has come forth before this council for revitalization of downtown Loveland, and I have the reputation for asking the tough questions for return on investment. And consequently, when I ask those tough questions, I've developed the reputation, Darrell is anti-downtown revitalization. Well, look at the record and tell me which issue, in the progress that has taken place in the last years, which issue have I voted against? I have supported every one of them. The vision for downtown Loveland, I have drawn comparisons, and council is tired of hearing me talk about it. My brother lives in McKinney, Texas, who has the most vital, beautiful downtown revitalization taking place probably in the United States for a city of comparable size. I have asked Loveland to take a look at what they're doing in that successful area. Thank you.
Alexi?
Downtown, you have to be practical. You know, a great idea that one of the preeminent business people in town told me is we should just close the street down. Every week, there should be events down there. There should be a water feature, there should be a bandstand, there should be park benches, there should be the ability for different business owners to push their, you know, have some temporary patio-type stuff that go right out into the street, and they should be able to do that once a week. As far as some of the other things, I mean, we definitely need more parking, a parking structure, and we need investment, but we need to, I think we need to, you know, make downtown a little bit more European, a little bit modern, and make it a place that people want to bring their families and hang out. And you can't do that on how the downtown is structured right now. Downtown is, you know, just not structured that well, so. I would make a lot of changes.
Thank you. And Cecil?
Well, downtown is the heart and soul of this community, and it has been from the day that I moved here in 1976. And I tell stories about what those business people that were downtown did to help me as a first-year teacher in this community. We need to support that downtown, and that, and what we have been doing is, we have a strategic plan. It just takes people to actually read the plan. We've done studies, and one of the things that has happened in years past, every decade, for a matter of fact, we have done these plans, we've done the studies, and then we've put those studies on the shelf, and then moved a few planters around. What we need to do is actually continue doing some of the work that we've done downtown with things like the projects that we've got going right now, with the Brinkman Project, the Gallery Flats, we've, the Art Space Project, the Rialto Theater Center, all of these projects that are already on tap. We have, we have the momentum going downtown where developers are excited about coming and do more work there.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Alexi for this question, and it's a lot related to the last one. Are we putting too much emphasis on downtown Loveland?
Well, I mean, downtown Loveland has tons of empty buildings, and it's a soft spot. And one of the reasons we have organized crime in town is because of that. I mean, no, you can't put, I mean, we've split the city into a commercial center, which is out east on Highway 34, and now downtown is, it's not the commercial center, and it never will be now. And unless we make it the center of the community, then you don't have a town. I think that you can't not put, you've got to put more effort into it than, than we are, and, and you've got to use the ideas of the business owners that are down there already and let them have a free hand to do some things. I mean, I'd, I'd get a bulldozer out and I'd tear out all the pavement and I'd put in grass, and I'd throw away the thousands of dollars' worth of Disneyland-looking-like plans that we have. We spent tons of money on them, and I think they're terrible.
Thank you. Cecil? If you'd like to answer that question.
Okay, I was just listening to the Mickey Mouse thing. Can you repeat the question one more time?
I'm sorry. Are we putting too much emphasis on downtown Loveland?
Well, here's, here's where Darrell and I are a little bit different. I get accused of focusing totally on downtown, and actually, that's not true. But I think it's important to focus efforts on downtown as it is on every one of our corridors. And we have done that. We have those projects that I just mentioned earlier in the previous question that are going downtown. But just recently, within the last month, we have put investments into two manufacturing companies. Lead, out on Boyd Avenue, not downtown. Value Plastics, north of Walmart, on 287, not downtown. Cardinal Glass, over on 8th and Van Buren, not downtown. So, are we putting too much emphasis on downtown? No, we're putting emphasis all over town, and that is critical.
Thank you. And Darrell?
Are we putting too much emphasis on revitalization of downtown? The answer is yes and no. The no should come first. Up to this point, no. We've asked tough questions, and great progress has been made downtown. But a funny little thing happened a couple of three weeks ago. It's called a flood. We have, and the area, suffered tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars, close to a billion dollars' worth of damage. I'm back to that point of reprioritizing. There's a couple of things going into this budget that I'm taking great issue with. There is an item in the budget for $1 million for downtown Loveland for project to be determined. How's that for prioritization? Another vision is to expand the Loveland Museum up and over 5th Street, occupying the second-most-used parking lot in downtown Loveland at a cost of $16 million, and then having to replace the parking lot. having to replace the parking lot for probably $7, $8 million. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, and we'll start with Cecil. Do you support capital expansion fees, CEFs, and explain your reasons, please?
Well, I'm going to answer it this way. We have had almost every counselor and almost every candidate up here talk about pay-as-you-go, and how that is a conservative budgeting issue. And guess what? Capital expansion fees are the best way that we have been able to do our pay-as-you-go, because we have paid into a bank account and saved, so that when we need to expand, we've got the money. Now, there are only two ways to pay for projects. We can either save for it, utilizing these capital expansion fees, or we can go into debt. Me? I guess I'm going to have to be considered conservative, because I believe we need to pay as we go. Do we need to continually look at the CEFs? Absolutely. And do we? Yes. Every single year, we look at them.
Thank you.
What a complicated question, support CEFs. Interesting thing happens with our CEFs, and council has had discussion and discussion about whether to raise them, keep up with inflation, keep up with increased construction costs. And so, what do we do? The argument that we have CEFs, and guess what we do almost every week? Applicants come in, and the more we raise them, the more we forgive. We just forgive $780,000 worth recently. We just forgave $1 million worth recently. So, you can raise those CEFs and do whatever you want to with them. And incidentally, to this point, they have worked very, very well. But I can tell you, in the, in the development world out there, they are saying we're becoming non-competitive with our surrounding communities, that our CEFs are getting too high. Raise them, if you will. They have worked marvelously to this point, but they need to be stabilized. And the more you raise them, the more we forgive in incentives that come before us, and we've been doing that in abundance. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alexi?
I guess that's part of the drift, if you've just been letting that happen. I mean, a capital expansion fee, you know, if you have to put in new infrastructure, you need that fee. If whoever's applying or is going to be building is not needing new infrastructure, that fee should be different, a different scale. I mean, I think it's a valuable tool, but again, if you're, every time a big company comes to you and says, "We're going to move our company to Texas if you don't give us so-and-so," I'd say, "Bye." At some point, you got to say no, you know, make an investment here and stay here. So, you're going to have to have capital expansion fees, but you're going to have to probably lower them. And if you're going to have a fee, it's got to be a fee. You can't just forgive it one day and not the next. So...
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Darrell. And the question is, what are the pros and cons of urban renewal districts like Centerra?
Let's see, I have one minute or 90 seconds to answer a two-hour question. Is, do I understand?
One minute, yes.
Pros and cons. I can tell you every project that, that happens and gets developed in Loveland, there are pros and cons on each side. I think this is probably aimed somewhat at the incentives that were provided to McWinnies out there. I can tell you, I, going back to my early days in the radio station here, I made my advertising living off of sort of downtown Loveland and the surrounding area. If anyone would like to realize the extreme sad shape that this city would have if they had not done Centerra and what, Centerra, and what the McWinnies have done out there. It is so critical, the, the early-day dollar sales tax revenue loss that was occurring to the, I saw the check studies. We were having a retail drainage out of this community you would not believe, and it was cured by what happened out there with the incentives given out east. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexi?
Uh, these are some of, these are the entities that we're talking about. And I think the pros and cons are it's giving a lot of control to private interests. I think that's the con, and I think sometimes we got conned, quite frankly. I mean, if Centerra was not built, the city would be very different, and maybe not entirely bad. You know, it's created as many problems as it solved. So, I think the, the pros are is that you have good ideas from entrepreneurs that are put to use in those type of arrangements. And the cons are is you have people that take advantage of them and don't ever live up to their agreements. And it's a balance, but there's definitely pros and cons.
Thank you.
There are, I, I, I think Alexi hit it right on the, on the head. There are, there are pros and cons. The pros have been that we've been able to use the URAs in this community. One of them has really gained us some financial stability. It has allowed us not to raise your sales taxes for quite a while. It's allowed us not to raise your property taxes. The, what it, one of the cons is that it has impacted, to some degree, what the county budgets have, what they can do. It has impacted the county budgets. So, it's going to be important going forward with these URAs that we work with the county as a partner. The thing is that when you can't look just at the URAs, you've got to look at every investment that we've made, because there are some significant investments we have made through incentives that the county has been big benefactors for. So, it's a big conversation.
Thank you. And we'll, moving right along, we will go to a question about the flood. Some of the parks in Loveland are devastated from flooding. FEMA may not pay if they are rebuilt in the same location. What do you think should be done with these parks? And we'll start with Alexi, please.
I think the flood was, although I think we're going to recover very quickly, I think that rebuilding the parks is not the first priority. I think rebuilding the downtown and filling the empty buildings is, and then we can bring the parks along, you know, on a, probably a more gradual basis. The parks that the kids use for softball and that kind of thing, and the fairgrounds, I think they need to be gotten usable right away. But I think there's some infrastructure that might not be, that it shouldn't be our first priority. Our first priority should be to move forward with the real issues and with things that are going to generate more jobs and more revenue first, and then repair some of the infrastructure that's ruined over a period of years.
Good. Thank you. And Cecil?
The, um, the, the question of the parks, again, prioritization is, is absolutely critical. But one of the things that I do know is, is that the disaster declaration that has been made by the federal government and the, and the governor will repay us to rebuild those parks. Will it be exactly the way it was? My guess is probably not. But will FEMA allow parks to be rebuilt in flood zones? Yes. And the reason they will is because they don't want us building homes and businesses down in that flood plain. So, will, will we rebuild them? Yes. Will it be a little later than everything else? Probably. Will it be, will it look exactly the way it did before the flood? Probably not. So, the other thing we need to know is, is that FEMA, with the declaration disaster that's been put forth, FEMA will reimburse the, the city for 75%, and the state has committed to 12.5%. So, it'll be a 12.5% local match. Thank you.
Darrell?
You're asking me to answer a question that we have been unable to answer at this point. So, much of the damage that occurs in a flood, so oftentimes, you can't even get to assess the damage, and we're still somewhat in that mode. We know that our parks have been hard-hit. Why do they get built where they're built? Probably because they're in flood fringes, flood plains, and consequently, that's a good use for the plans. It is impossible at this time to say what parks will, will be rebuilt. We are in the process, as I think Hugh McKean pointed out earlier, so much decision-making that still lies ahead of us. Some of them, we may not be able to rebuild. We may not be permitted to. Others, we will be making decisions on what revenues do we have, how much insurance are we going to get back from, how much payment back from FEMA. You're asking a question that is impossible to answer at this time, because we're still assessing and making decisions on what we will and will not rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go, move to the next question, and we'll ask Cecil to begin. The question is, is public input adequately considered in council's votes on development and land use applications? Please explain why or why not.
Oh, okay. Is public input, right? Is that the question?
Would you like me to?
Yeah, please, one more time.
Is public input adequately considered in council's votes on development and land use applications? Please explain why or why not.
Okay, I, um, I, I think the, the public has every opportunity. And as a matter of fact, sometimes I have been criticized for giving too much opportunity for public input at city council meetings. But it's important that we hear from the public, and, uh, we also, most of these things come to us through the Planning Commission, and they will have heard it, and they will have taken public input. So, there, uh, there is ample opportunity for the public to give their input. Personally, I listen to all of that public input, and, and I know that there are times when maybe we've gotten down into the weeds after we've heard some of that public input. So, do we take it in? Absolutely.
Thank you. Darrell?
I look at that clock back there that says 9:03 right now, and understand that a lot of times, I'm looking at that clock when it's 12:30 in the morning, hearing land use applications and the public testimony that goes with it. Do we listen? Is there adequate public input? The public has more opportunity to come listen, and trust me, they do. And they go before the Planning Commission first. I think when I'm here till 12:30 in the morning, yes, we're giving adequate attention to that. Thank you. I don't need any more time.
Thank you. Alexi?
Well, land use is kind of an interesting part of the council's power, since, um, with land use, they have a semi-judicial kind of ability to make decisions, to condemn land, to condemn farmland, build Centerra, you know, different things. So, I think that the public might have been listened to, but I don't know that they've always been heard. I think that a lot of what is done is politics as usual. And I, I don't think it's always agreeable to the interests of all the citizens. So...
Thank you.
I've had enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, um, the next question, we will start with Darrell. Was the city's adoption of oil and gas regulations a good example of transparency and open government? Why or why not?
Absolutely. First question that came to the council was enact a ban. I stated the position, what you're asking me to do is to violate the law of the state of Colorado. I wouldn't do that. Next question came, rightly through great effort, was through the petition process. We should know, and I have in my hands, according to Colorado Revised Statute 3111114. The point I'm going to make is, I follow the rule of law. That's first. My opinion is second. I can't read all of this, other than it will tell you that this council has the ability to check the form of ballots, balloting, challenging, canvassing, certifying the result, securing the purity of elections, guarding against abuses of the election, elective franchise. And there's a, a case law that says, "And if we do not hold in this way, we shall be compelled to say that a petition with sufficient number of names on its face valid should be laid before the Secretary of State and ignored." No, we have to go through the rule of law, and that's what I choose to follow, what I must follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexi?
Well, laws change. People marry who they want to marry. There's a lot of laws that have changed recently. Laws change because laws are made by the people, for the people, and of the people. And I think that there are certain laws that need to be changed. And if that's state law, and you have to take the fight to the state, then you should, and I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I'm going to ask you to repeat the question, because I think you asked something about our passing the oil regulations, and it had nothing to do with the answers I've heard about, um, the petition.
I will re, reread the question. Was the city's adoption of oil and gas regulations a good example of transparency and open government? Why or why not?
I will tell you that our, um, our process for passing the oil and gas regulations, to me, was not quality. And I'll tell you why it was not a quality process. Because what our citizens initially came to us about was they were, when they first heard that there was oil and gas drilling going to go on, they came to us and were concerned about three things: air quality, water quality, and property values. We never addressed that conversation with our citizens. Never. We have yet, to this day, to address that with our citizens in a two-way conversation. We've addressed regulations, and when they came to us, we limited it, the debate, to what was in the regulations. We've never had that conversation. And I will tell you that the reason I believe we are where we are today is because we minimized those people's concerns, and we demonized them. And when you do that, you end up where we are today.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I have one more question, and, um, we'll start with Alexi. How would you support the arts community with all the business this brings to our, to Loveland?
Well, I'm an artist. I'm an artisan. And I think the most important thing to, for an artist is for them not to starve. You know, I'm a master-level timberframer, and I've been doing it for 13 years. And I know what it's like not to be able to make a living doing what you do. So, in supporting the artists, we have to give them, try to give them some type of a marketplace. And I think art space is a good idea, but I'm not sure how we move past that into a, a situation that allows our artists to actually make a living at what they do. But I think that's the, that's the issue. If you're going to support the arts, and they're going to support you, they can't be down there starving. So, how we do that, I'm not exactly sure. But you have to have a very, very strong community sense in downtown, and you have to have a lot of people down there on the streets buying that art. And we don't have that yet.
Thank you. Thank you. And Cecil?
Yes, I think we have, um, I, I have to go back to the Destination Downtown event that we, that the Community Foundation hosted here about five years ago. And what Bill Hudnut said then, the former mayor of Indianapolis, is, "Be who you are." This is an arts community. We've been an arts community for a long, long time. This is the first community that ever had the 1% This is the first community that ever had the 1% for the arts. Needs to continue. That's how we can support some of these artists. Our Loveland Center for Business Development can work with those small artists, small business artists, because they are business people, to help them with those things like business plans and how do you advertise, billing, all of those questions that, I hate to say this, but artists generally aren't known for those skills. So the other way is buy those art pieces. They're very important. That's their product. Thank you.
Thank you. And Darrell?
I think one of the thrills of my lifetime was a very warm relationship, friendship, with the founder of the Loveland Museum, Mr. Harold Dunning. Out of that became an absolute devotion, frankly, to the museum, although some people at times think I do not have that, but it is deep within me. I'd like for you to join me at 10 o'clock next Monday morning down at the Heartland Cafe. There's a table of about five artists there, including some of the top artists in the world, sculptors in the world, also the owner of the Foundry here in Loveland, who's a close friend. My purchases of Loveland art are extreme. In fact, we went in Hearts and Horses last night, and my wife brought home another, shall we say extravagant parcel. But anyway, my purchases, my associations, and management by walking around and listening to them every Monday morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to closing remarks, and we'll begin with Darrell. And you will have 60 seconds to make your closing remarks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I revert back to the word prioritization. You will see my campaign slogan. It says, "First things first." Now, we've had a flood, and we've got some prioritizations going on in our budget that are not proper. We need to rework our budget, but we're behaving as though things never happened. We have millions and millions of dollars of damage around us. Loveland did, we got hit, but not like others. And we are going to have to place some of our dollars within our city that normally would go for our own purposes, are going to have to be devoted outside our city limits. You think those merchants on South Lincoln have been hurt? Try talking to some of the merchants out on West Eisenhower. And our dollars and our prioritization need to go to help them. So my vision is jobs, jobs, jobs with our continued investment in economic development and seeking those jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecil?
Oh, we're coming this way.
Yes, we're going to go this way, just for closing remarks.
Okay. I had some prepared remarks, but I'm going to diverge from them a little bit. I want to reiterate to you that we have unbelievable, unbelievable opportunities in the city of Loveland. And the momentum that has been established in the last several years is unprecedented. And we need to continue that momentum. But I've heard tonight about partisanship, and I want to ask you one question. When you turn on your light switch, you tell me which one of those ions is a Republican ion, a Democrat ion, or a Libertarian ion, or whatever other party? When you turn on the faucet, if you can tell me which drop is any of those parties, then it's a partisan issue. If you can tell me which lane or which piece of that asphalt has a party to it, then it's partisan issue. But what we deal with on this council is not partisan. It is what do we need to do? And I hope you will vote for someone with uncommon sense.
Thank you. Thank you. And Alexi?
Well, Mr. Clausen has indicated that he thinks the city's been adrift. Well, he's been on the council for many years. He's the dean of the council. If it's been drifting, it's been drifting while he is jointly at the helm. Mr. Gutierrez mentioned that they minimized and demonized a certain portion of the community, and I think that's the protecting Loveland part. And that's on his watch. I think public safety is number one. I think if there were a bunch of wells in the flood zone, you would have been very upset. I'm for the moratorium, and a vote for me is not for how it is now, giving away money to, for someone else's fraud, a Marisol, nor for how it was in the past, which was a controlling interest of business that could do whatever they wanted. But it's a vote for what it will be in the future. And so I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much to all three candidates for mayor for participating in this forum. Thank you also. Thank you. Thank you all for participating in this forum as the most important participants. Special thanks must be given to the League of Women Voters of Laramie County and to the city of Loveland. Thank you to all the members of the league who spent so much time organizing and presenting this event. Remember that this is, this election is conducted with all mail-in ballots. The ballots will be mailed next week to arrive no later than October 18th. And completed ballots must be received in the Laramie County Clerk's Office no later than 7:00 PM on Election Day, which is Tuesday, November 5th. This forum will be, as I said, rebroadcast on City of Loveland Cable Channel 16 multiple times between now and November 5th. A majority of the candidates for city council and mayor have written answers to questions by the League of Women Voters for, and those are posted on the website, vot411.org. There are three very useful websites listed on the PowerPoint. They are vot411.org, the League of Women Voters of Laramie County's website, which is lvwleramiecounty.org, and voter information. And for other information about elections, go to laramie.org/elections. We appreciate your questions and your participation. The league could not do what they do without your help. And most of all, remember that democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you very much for listening to this candid forum.